I'd like to call the meeting to order at 4:00.
4:02.
Yep. 4:02, we do have a quorum.
Yep.
So, the first thing on the agenda is tonight. Let me get it out for sure. Okay. Is the approval of minutes from last meeting.
Yep.
We have a motion to approve minutes.
It's a move.
And a second?
Approved as your own.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, we'll get right into the heart of discussing our policy 5190 Student Dress Code. I and Michelle had some concerns about the fact that abdomen was deleted from one of the pages of the document and therefore showing your abdomen was able, was part, was okay for the dress code. And so, Michelle and I had discussed in the regular board meeting that maybe that was a standard that...
What's that, Michelle? Do you need a packet?
No, I didn't.
But maybe, maybe that was a topic that needed to go back to committee. So, we have brought this issue back to committee and we asked that the piloting group talk about it as well as Clark Lane and how they wrote, came to the conclusion to delete abdomen from the policy. And we were hoping to hear from some students, too.
Yes, so Andre, could you tell us who you have from the original committee here tonight?
Yes, we have from the committee that worked over the summer. We've got two students and we're hoping that a third will be able to join us soon.
Okay.
We've got Madison Gates and Abigail Goldberg-Curren.
They look so grown up, I thought they were part of the staff.
No. When you hear them speak, that confusion will stay. They, they really were the heart and soul of, of the work this summer. I was involved as well. Kirk Sheamus and Allison Millane were as well and then a number of faculty members and a larger number of students than faculty, actually.
And faculty were invited but couldn't make it tonight?
Yes, this is a tough time of day for, you know, parents with kids.
Okay.
And...
So, if you could kind of go over your rationale for why there were certain things you altered, so we do have the, before you Craig produced the handbook for both Waterford High School and for Clark Lane, if we're interested in that, Michelle and Joy. And go ahead, Andre, if you could elaborate a little more on the real specifics.
Okay, if you don't mind, what I'll do is I'll sort of lay out some, some general what we did and then I'll probably just ask the students to really take over for me when we get to really why we wanted, you know, the things we want to change. But, you know, as we've been looking at our school processes and procedures to figure out, are we being as equitable and inclusive for all students as we should be? Are our rules treating all students fairly and equally? We decided that one of the first places to start would be looking at our student dress code because it is something that will impact every kid every day. And we, we got a committee together over the summer thinking initially, and primarily the adults thinking, that we probably would just review it, make some minor changes and be done. But the more we really dug into it and the more we heard from students about the disparate impact of the dress code on different students and specifically the gender disparity in how students experience the dress code, we really realized that there was, there was more that we needed to study than what we thought at first. And since Maddie and Abigail are two of the students who really sort of expressed the concerns of the student body very well, I think it makes the most sense for me to just turn it over to the two of you if, if you don't mind talking about some of the specifics and definitely, you know, things like are we no longer policing the shirt length and the visible abdomen issue?
Yeah, sure, so for one of the first main causes or concerns that we had was the socioeconomic, you know, taking that into perspective for students because some people, you know, this is a very awkward time of children's lives or just teenagers' lives and it's hard to accommodate for, you know, their growing changes, for the seasons, and some families may have more, it may be more of a financial burden to keep getting clothing that suits, you know, students' growing height that might rapidly change in the span of like a couple months. So, for the specific length and, you know, the fingertip rule and the very nitpicky, very scrutinizing rules like that, we opted to omit them because it's very, it's hard to judge someone based on, you know, the length of their arms. Because there's some students, like I know even Ethan, he's not here, but he was talking to us about it, how he's like this tall, lanky kid and he can't, you know, like his arms are like way longer for him than someone else, but he only can get the shorts that, you know, are a little shorter because they don't make sizes like that for him. So, that was one of the concerns we had.
Yeah, our biggest concern was that these rules that are put in place aren't concrete and they're not very like scientific and they don't fit all students. So, depending on body type and as Maddie was saying, socioeconomic reasons and things like that, that all of the different rules don't apply to each student in the same way. So, they're overly targeting certain students and they're not really affecting other students as much. So, we wanted to really focus on the why we have these rules in place and target those specifically and eliminate the other things.
Could you be more specific, especially with the abdomen rule, as to how that would be discriminatory depending on body types? I, I understand the discussion about economics, it actually was brought up at the last board meeting. Now, I, I have no problem with a little bit of gap. I'm afraid that if we have a little bit of a gap, it's suddenly going to inch up and we're going to end up into more of a halter top situation. And you guys are absolutely right that it affects women more than men. There is no two ways about it. I remember when I went to school, you know, you had to kneel down and your skirt had to touch the floor kind of thing. But, so if you could elaborate a little more about the abdomen rule, give us some real, I mean, I, I don't think any teacher is really gonna, but if you've got a little skin showing here because your shirt came out in the corner or something, I don't think any teacher's, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but I, I don't think anybody's gonna send you to the office. But if you've got on a bra versus a true top, you know, how are we distinct, how are we going to police that? I guess that's my worry.
Yeah, so when we were looking at that specific rule, I think it was exactly what you said, how some students are worried that, you know, it's trendy to wear, you know, like things that show your midriff just slightly. And that will kind of targets that specifically, you know, saying your abdomen or your, your undergarments, like you can't show, like having a bra strap, that can't show. And that's hard, hard for girls especially because, you know, you can't really control that aspect of your life and having to, and it's, it's hard to get clothing that covers everything. But for, I think we tried to cover that, you know, specifically your stomach, you know, with the opaque material on a student's chest, below the buttocks or the undergarments, that, I think it was the F clause. And I certainly see where we could amend it to include abdomen if that's like really, you know, the thing that's petering on the edge.
That's one of my big sticking points.
Yeah, because I think that would still be flexible for students to wear clothing that's, you know, just above their midriff, but it would prohibit, you know, going overboard.
Right.
So, yeah, I think we could consider that.
Good, I think this is very valuable discussion that, you know, the board needs to understand where you guys are coming from as well as, I think there's a certain expectation of the board to be, have a little bit of professionalism and whatnot. When we go through the schools and see kids dressed a certain way, we think, whoa, is it time for uniforms for everyone? You know, that kind of, you know, I don't know. Maybe the rest of the committee has something to say about this all as well. What do you think, ladies and gentlemen? Any questions?
I got here late, so I'm sorry, but I can fill the gap since no one's going. So, I apologize for being late. I have a lot to say. So, first, I'm a visual learner. So, if you don't know, I'm gonna set the table and give you background. I teach high school, 25-year teacher, and I manage a restaurant. So, I live this stuff every day. So, I can tell you a story years ago about a principal that we had named Mike Fianza. We went to a staff meeting and he said, is this acceptable? Is this acceptable? Is this acceptable? What's acceptable? What's not acceptable? So, my, my first question would be, I'd like to see what you envision is acceptable and then I'd like to see what you envision is not acceptable as an example, so I can have a clear understanding. With that, the first thing that you read is that it's not the desire of this administration to get involved in enforcing an unmanageable dress code. Is, I think that what are we doing if we're not setting them up for success? And the example that I use is, you play a professional sport, you have to wear a uniform, you're making a lot of money and you have to be in a uniform. And I realize it's not a professional sport, but at the same token, it's a school and it's a business and we're not setting you up for success if we think that we're going to the club. And I don't mind the club, but I just think that somewhere along the line, which I think reading what's prohibited, it does cover what's not acceptable, which makes sense. But I think that here is the goal. It's to prepare you for after high school. The goal is to make you a successful graduate. So, by not allowing or allowing some of these things, are we not fulfilling our goal by making you successful or not successful? So, I'll give you an example. Where I work, we battle every day with someone tucking in their shirt. If you're working and we're setting you up for success, it's not, you're not successful or professional if your shirt's not tucked in. And I use this example. LeBron James makes a lot of money, but his shirt's tucked in when he's at work. And if he's not, if he's not tucked in, then he gets a fine. So, that's my thought. I'd like to see something that I can envision what's acceptable and something that you would say is not acceptable, so then there's no gray area in my head. And I get it, it's a battle that you're fighting every day, but I think from the board standpoint, students need to look professional when they're in school. That's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And I think you brought up a good point about what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. It's hard, I would imagine, for the teachers as well to determine if it's very subjective. Is it just the whole abdomen? Is it an inch above the delt line? Is it, you know, we've got to be, I guess we, I hate to see back to kneel down and does your skirt touch the ground kind of objectiveness, but...
You're showing your knee.
I know, I know, I know. But there has to be some, some level of, of, we gotta take away the subjective part of it and make it a purely objective thing, so it's easier to enforce, I would think. You can't enforce, if it just says, you know, the abdomen is allowed to be open, it could be any part of that abdomen or any of these things. Dress code is probably the hardest policy to ever come before any board and most of them shove it under the table. You're lucky that our board has become very involved with the dress code policy because I think it's a very important issue.
I will say, since the meeting, I guess two weeks ago or last week, I don't remember, I have received numerous information, you know, of people reaching out to me that work in the school system that say they are uncomfortable with the possible change in the dress code, which is what I questioned before about a possible pilot and how the, if teachers knew about the pilot or the staff knew about the pilot, both at the high school and the middle school. I know the middle school is not a pilot, but the, you know, the high school was. And of course, I have heard from people, a few people that are in favor of changing it as well. So, I don't want to say I haven't heard from both sides, but I've heard more that are not in favor about, again, working in the school system and for the professional aspect. And so, you know my background, I work with young people. I do leadership programs in the region with many young people. I teach them how to advocate for themselves in a variety of different areas. I bring them up to the legislative office building to testify. You guys are doing a phenomenal job and amazing job and you're hitting all the points and you're doing your research. With that being said, I really, I, at the state level too, sometimes you don't want to be the first school or the first state to do something. Because when you're the first one, you learn from all your mistakes and you learn what works and what doesn't work. So, I don't know with other schools that might not be going in this direction, you know, do we want to be the first going in this direction because it does have an impact in so many different ways? We have speakers that come into the school that are, you know, looking at our school, observing Waterford. We have students going out representing Waterford to different things, you know, my programs, other programs. We have students going out into the workforce that I'm working with them on a regular basis and trying to educate them in what's appropriate in the workforce. We, I, you know, it's important because we're setting a standard and we're always talking about standards in our math standards, our English standards, business also standards in dress. And if I look at your dress code, the top paragraph, as Chris started, if you continue in the paragraph, it even says, you know, it's not our desire to get involved in enforcing unmanageable dress codes, but also any attire which impairs safety or increases the risk of injury to others, causes discomfort to the health and safety of others, and that does have uncleanliness, cause distraction or disruption of the learning environment. I understand the student's perspective is different than the adult perspective and that's where, you know, we also have to remember the causes distraction, discomfort of our health and safety or risk of injury for also our employees of our school system. And so, that is important to me. So, I guess for me, I don't have problems with all, some of these things, but I would potentially, I understand the midriff, abdomen.
Abdomen.
I would like to add that. I need, I'm not sure, I gotta look at this again, but I definitely would add that piece of it.
Go ahead, Chris.
I would look, or I would say to Andre, or I would say to Allison, what do you envision is not manageable? Like, give me, so I have an understanding. Give me your top three or five of this doesn't work and this does work because you are, in my mind, the boots on the ground and you guys are seeing this. I didn't see this one.
You're right.
I was like, oh. As I'm on my soapbox. What's working and what's not working? But when you start with, again, the part about you're not, you don't want to enforce something that's unmanageable, sell to me what's unmanageable. Or sell to me, so I have an understanding. And again, I go, in my world, it's the shirt tucked in. So, I get, I don't want this. I don't want this and I don't want this.
It's okay, Chris.
I don't want it. You follow me? Because to me, it's not acceptable. And I go LeBron, NBA, he's making a lot of money, his shirt's tucked in. It's not tucked in, you're getting fined.
So, I think both your question and Michelle's previous, you did mention wanting to know how our piloting of the new approach is going. And one thing we learned is we made the decision at the very beginning, don't give out the full new dress code, you know, proposal to the faculty and give them the misperception that this is the actual, you know, new set of rules because you guys hadn't acted on it yet. So, we just gave them sort of an executive summary of what we would be and wouldn't be worrying about and enforcing this fall. And yes, that inevitably has led to some confusion, but that is always the case with any pilot. But what I can tell you on a day-to-day basis is the experience of kids coming in and being stopped in the hallway either by a security guard, a member of the administrative team, or that, that first period teacher and being told, you're out of dress code, you know, you need to go to the office or get something to change into or something like that, has ended. Inevitably, there was always somebody who made it into first period class in the past and sat down before their teacher noticed what they were wearing or that there was a little bit of abdomen visible if they stood up. And then their second or third period teacher did see it and it sort of led to that very awkward dynamic for the staff of, well, if the first period teacher didn't catch it and the third period teacher does, does it look like we're on the same page to kids or is that leading to confusion for students? Knowing that there are certain things that we're just not that worried about has, in most of the feedback we've gotten from faculty and I would let the middle school, you know, talk if they want to about affairs, is that the feedback we've gotten from teachers is that other than some initial confusion because we didn't give them a written set of dos and don'ts to follow, has been, boy, am I glad I don't have to tell a kid to take off his baseball cap every day. Boy, am I glad I'm not expected to be conscious of or aware of the abdomens of the young women in my class. And, and what we've heard anecdotally from students, we haven't surveyed the whole school, but we are hearing that kids do feel more respected and more valued as adults or young adults who can make their own decisions. And you mentioned LeBron James. If I had his salary, I'd wear whatever you told me to. But our, our student athletes are still wearing their uniforms appropriately and demonstrating that they understand in, on a sports field, I dress this way. In a family consumer science class, you know, when I'm cooking, I, I wear the lab coat, I dress this way. In a PE class, I dress this way. A tech ed class, I dress this way. Have we seen a couple of students sort of stretch the limits of, am I going to be allowed to wear this, especially the first couple of weeks of September? Yes, we did see a little bit of that. And quite honestly, my observation has been is that the, the social pressure of, nobody else is dressing like that, why are you? Has, has basically made that for the most part end. The students are finding an appropriate place to dress where we're not policing the choices they've made about their own bodies and they're making reasonable choices. And the tone of our interactions with students is much more positive because we know we're not going to worry about, you know, other than the obvious, if something is dangerous, if clothing is, you know, excessively dirty, if there's, you know, an offensive message on a T-shirt. Yes, we're still addressing those. But if it's not something that's outside of the lines, we're now assuming it's inside the lines without worrying about its exact length. And ultimately, I would say what it comes down to is that old dress codes, including the dress code that you guys have in front of you, the pre-2021 Waterford High School dress code, are based on an assumption that I think is very flawed, two flawed assumptions. One is that girls' bodies and how they dress themselves are a distraction to boys in school, which I, I have some problems with that assumption. But the other side of that assumption is that teenage boys simply can't do what they should if there are pretty girls around them. And I think these are both horribly sexist and flawed assumptions about who these young adults in our school are. And the proposed changes to the dress code are really about respecting the fact that these are young adults who are able to make good decisions without us really, you know, litigating every, literally every inch of their clothing.
I don't know that you answered my question. My question is, give me a concrete example of what doesn't work and what works. Like, if you're here, if you're here during the day, you, Kirk, Allison, if you have five infractions or five referrals, whatever you call them, what is that that's a referral that works or doesn't work versus what works?
So, break it down this way. Under the old dress code, forget the pilot, pre-pilot, what were the biggest dress code infractions?
Right.
That's...
That's a little bit of stomach showing.
So, let me ask you this. I'm sorry, you agree they shouldn't have hats, is that correct?
That was the code. That was the code.
You asked about the old dress code. Those were the.
Okay, but under the old code, if it were the code, you would agree, under the old code, you agree that they can't wear hats?
Yes.
Correct? What was the next one?
Hoods.
Okay.
What was it?
Hoods, the hoodies.
Hoods, okay.
Yep.
And abdomen?
And shorts that were too short.
Okay. And when you, what was the, you sent the kids home or had them?
No, we typically would see if they had other clothes to cover up.
Okay.
If they didn't, does your friend have clothes we could cover up with? Or we would call home or offer clothes from the nurse's office.
Were the people that were abusing this or having the infractions the same people all the time?
No.
No?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. So it was across the board kind of thing, okay.
Yeah, I'll just say as the parent of two daughters, the youngest graduated five years ago. And clothing has changed since that five years. It was very challenging to go shopping and not spend a fortune. Like, kids don't want to shop at Talbot's or L.L. Bean, but that's where you find the shorts that go beyond the fingertips.
Yeah.
But students who are shopping at Forever 21 or H&amp;M, it's very hard for them to find clothes that meet the old dress code requirements.
I think some of the challenges, they hit upon a couple of points. I think there's four key issues here, right? One is the money issue, which you just talked about. Not every family is going to have money to buy multiple sets of clothes, right? So whatever our dress code was, there was an expectation that families were purchasing trendy clothes for outside of school so their child could fit in, right? I think the other issue is what you all have hit on. How do we balance that fact with making sure that students are prepared and everything else, which with remote work is totally out the window because everybody's dressing in shorts, T-shirts, and flip-flops now, right? I mean, so that's, the working world has changed. But making sure our students know when to dress for appropriate settings is important. I think there's the discipline end of things in balancing, how much do we want kids in class and out of class? And I'll use the phrase that we use in our home with our 10-year-old daughter is, which battles do you want to pick and at what cost, right? So if the cost of the dress code has lost instructional time, then that's the cost-benefit analysis that the board ultimately has to do because policy is a board function. And then to, I understand the need for a defined dress code, but I also know the more rules you have, the more loopholes you have. And I use the example, when I was a middle school principal, we had a simple, no running in the hallways. Kids ran in the hallways all the time and I would stop them and they'd say, "I was jogging, I was skipping, I wasn't running, Mr. G.I." I mean, the building administrator was laughing. So you don't want to be so prescriptive because the more rules you have, the more loopholes you have. So I think those four key factors are really what the board is wrestling with as articulated by our students and building administrators. So whatever we leave here as the recommendation back to the full board, I think really needs to balance with, balance those, really those four factors of preparing students, the money issue, you know, the discipline implications, and really how prescriptive do you want to be, given that trends do change.
But this pilot plan that you have here, this covers those things that you said.
What do you mean?
5132, what I'm reading.
I'm not following you, Chris. Same.
You may be looking at our old dress code.
Yeah.
The one that we moved away from.
Yeah, Chris, so the board asked for a copy of the dress code. So on one page, I did last year's dress code on top and below it, this year's dress code for Waterford High. And then on the second page, I did Clark Lane's dress code, which hasn't changed, and we referenced last year's page number and then this year's page number.
It's a handbook, it's in the handbook.
So this is handbook excerpts.
Are we missing something then? I'm sorry. We have just one high school and one Clark Lane.
Yep, but the high school, respectfully, if you look.
Oh, I see.
Has a 2020, 21 on top.
Yep.
And then about two-thirds of the way down the page has a 2021, 22.
Okay.
So I just tried to efficiently put it on one sheet of paper for the board's review.
Got it.
Chris, you know what's important, what's like kind of non-negotiable? Safety is important.
Say that again?
Safety. So with the hats and hoods, we need to still be able to recognize a student's face and recognize that it's our students coming in and out of the building and on the cameras. So that's important to us.
Then there was another concern I had with the hats and hoods. And the policy says, you know, you've got to clear your ears so you can tell if they've got earbuds in or not. Because I think there could be a potential for some real issues with the internet devices in the classroom. If you've got a hood on and you've got your earphones going and you've got the phone in the pocket, you know, they could be even not connected wireless and whatever and be totally tuned out to the lesson. And that, so to me, I forgot to say, besides abdomen, the ears is a biggie for me, too.
And that is in A1?
Right, no, I remember it, but I'm wondering how the heck we're going to enforce that? Because if you've got the hood on, the hood is not going to stop here. I guess, so most hoods, if hoods are allowed, then they're going to come up here.
Well, they were, like, you know, Chris is wearing his hood right now.
Oh, okay, they don't wear them on their head, they wear them back. Gotcha.
Previously, we would say, get that hood all the way down.
Okay.
And that's what they would do.
That would be too much.
So how do you, how do you determine that?
But now you have a mask on, so you have a hood and a mask. And so that, how do you know that that's Chris Jones on the video?
But can I just mention that a lady with hair covering her ears, we're not going to ever have students to pull back their hair, so I don't understand.
I'm not talking about earbuds, I'm talking about safety.
Well, the earbud concern is, we would have to ask females, if anyone will want hair, to pull the hair back, to show us their ears.
Well.
The safety piece with the video cameras is actually a very good question. That was something that Allison Kirk and I did go around and around a bit on over the summer. And we decided we're just going to have to see. That's the nature of a pilot. And what we learned was, on those occasions where we do have to go to a video camera and identify who picked this book bag up or did somebody get in an argument in the hallway, the vast majority of times, we're able to identify them even with a hat or a hood on simply from, you know, the other distinguishing features. We can see their face or we just know who they are. And in those rare occasions where we couldn't immediately identify them, we could just follow them, the cameras are just about everywhere in the hallway, we'd follow them to a classroom and just walk right in.
Who belongs to that class?
Yeah. And we then know exactly who's there because they're there. And that was a concern that we had. As a matter of fact, in the realm of safety, that was the biggest concern. It was one that we really did spend a lot of time this summer debating within the administrative team. And that's the joy of a pilot, is we now know it's not the concern we thought it would be.
And that, that's why we have the A1, the head and face coverings, which do not obscure the face and ears.
Right.
Or interfere with the lens, so.
Right. Oh, go ahead, Joy, I'm sorry. Joy, go ahead. Joy has the floor, Chris.
My opinion is, in the absence of uniforms, this cannot be objective. You know, you can put head and this, I mean, I see all these lists of things that, like Tom said, there's going to be loopholes. The more you try to define a subjective policy, the harder it is to manage it. Now, am I saying not to have a dress policy at all? I don't know if I'm saying that. Realist, honestly, I don't know. But this is just, I mean, I write procedures for businesses and this is really, really hard to follow. I, you know, and I really have a lot of respect and awe of these administrators that are trying to hold this together in the school. This is very, very hard. And you're talking about hairstyles and this and that. And, you know, Marcia had to kneel down in the gym, have her skirt measured. Because then, you know, in the 19-whatevers, that was the only thing they had to worry about, right? I mean, so if we're going to have a policy like that, now you're bringing kids in one at a time, going through, I mean, that's just, to me, that's ludicrous and it's impossible.
Can I respond to part of that? The Board of Ed policy, it never ends up verbatim as what the students will see in a student handbook.
Well, then that's another problem.
Well, no, what we do is we take the Board of Ed policy and we write student-friendly language that adheres to the policy. And what we've done as a draft for what we would be, including for students, is a, students may wear, students must wear, defining those things that we do not, under any circumstances, want to see. Students may wear, which lets them know where that, that middle ground of your personal choice and preference is. And then students may not wear, that gets into the area of unsafe clothing, you know, clothing with patently offensive messages, whether they're drug-related, alcohol-related, racist in nature, anything of that nature. And it is, we're not on an island. We're actually using a model template that was developed by the National Organization for Women, which has been widely adopted in a lot of school systems around the country to great success. So we didn't want to be, you know, the only ones out there in a stream. We did want to make sure that we were in territory that has worked well in other school systems. And the format of what we would be giving to students adheres very closely to that format while adhering exactly to the language of what's being presented as the board policy.
Chris, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I, I see this now, I saw this before. I thought this first one was a modification of the email that we saw earlier, but this goes along with this.
Right.
But this covers the things that we've said, or that I've said, that we've spoken of, which are, to me, the big-ticket items, is the hoods, the hats, and the midriff. It's covered in here.
No, midriff's not.
Oh, no.
Abdomen's not.
Excuse me, no midriff. But aside from that, I, it makes sense to me. I think the only thing is, well, under F, I guess, would be, no, that doesn't need color.
So G, strapless and backless attire, to me, that's sexist. So that is only going to apply to girls. I'd like to see that out. I mean, I'd like to see this more generic, that it applies to everyone and can't have their finger pointed at a particular person. To Tom's note as well, the kids sometimes check each other, right? And to me, that's where I would like the administrators to focus. If you see kids getting teased because of what they have on, that's a safety issue, right? I mean, and so then we look and say, okay, where's that kid coming from? Can they afford clothes? Can they afford to take a shower? I mean, kids are going to self-check each other. And sometimes you just have to look at each individual situation at that point.
The other thing to remember, right, is this policy can be, any policy, whether it's this one or this one with modifications, is only enforced until the board revisits it again.
Right.
This isn't like, it's in place for 10 years or 20 years?
Yes and no, because we just made a policy where we could have 100 people in a gym who's speaking their mind, you know? So to reverse something that is now, you know, totally opposite over here and to reverse that is going to be very, very, very difficult if we feel that we need to.
I agree, it doesn't come without some pain.
Right, so. And, you know, we would have very skilled students giving us the, you know, what, how they should present for the complete opposite, you know? So I just don't want to go too far the other direction. But I'm okay with really most of this. I think I'm really truly stuck on, I'm stuck on F and G, I guess. Which I understand is bringing up a lot for the female students and I, you know, I understand that, I just don't know what to do about it.
You're saying F, you don't like it, you think it should be out?
They should add abdomen to F. So ladies, from the student body, I'm sorry, I forgot your names. But earlier you said that was something that you thought could be modified. Do you still feel that way? How do you feel about the abdomen situation, ladies?
I would say, I mean, if that's like the only thing that's withholding, I mean, I feel like that wouldn't really alter it like significantly, just give it an extra measure for protection, for safety circumstances if we're using it for that. I think it would be okay.
I also want to be careful not to pin the whole decision on one student.
No, but, no.
And I know that's not what you're suggesting, but I know we're live streaming.
But I would like to hear from them.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Because they are part of the student body, so.
I agree with Mazin that if it's a deal breaker and that's like the biggest issue, then that's something that can definitely be modified. Although I do think that what we have here that says, you know, it has to be opaque material that covers the student's chest, that a little bit of abdomen for, to be shown, should be acceptable.
Okay.
I actually had an opaque shirt on this morning that I was going to, like, you know, on my arms, that I was going to say, is this acceptable? And then I changed. I understand what you're saying exactly.
Yeah. Allison Kirk?
It becomes a challenge, I think, if you say that an abdomen cannot be shown, but you previously said, well, an inch is okay.
I'm okay, I'm okay with that. I'm just worried about saying an inch and then you're out there with a ruler every day, you know, trying to.
Well, that's what we're trying to eliminate.
Right, right, right.
So I think one of the issues is, Marcia's okay with an inch. Does two inches equal promiscuous? And I think we all have to be honest with what we're talking about. So Tracy is the one who's going to talk to these young ladies. And is she saying to one set of young ladies, that's okay? And another, it's promiscuous? I don't know if that's something we should all be saying to them, I think it's.
I don't think we're saying promiscuous. I think you're misleading, I think we're saying unprofessional and unacceptable in public, kind of.
But that's not, on the ground, Chris asked a question, boots on the ground, that's how the child interprets it. They don't interpret it as, this is a lesson they're teaching me when I work at a bank one day. What they hear is, there's something wrong with the way I dress. And it's frankly given to all the female teachers and administrators to enforce. It's a strange thing and it's good that we're bringing it up. But you have to really step back and say, what is the difference between an inch and two? I'm not in any way advocating bikinis or, but at the same time, it's saying that Joy has a point that the kids check each other. You know, it's tricky. You said, it's one of the trickiest policies you've ever looked at as a board. It is. And Marcia's instinct was, a little's okay. So someone might not agree with you, Marcia, and say, no, an inch isn't okay at all. So that's the problem. And it's hard to enforce it, the impressionable kids.
Absolutely.
And not ruin their day by, that's the first encounter they have with the school.
Yeah, that's my point. I mean, I respect, you know, the committee, you're looking at a policy, you're going to pick it apart and everything like that. But I think the biggest difference from me, as administrator, that's out there in the morning when the kids come in, is that, let's face it, they're coming to us with all different things going on in their lives, right? I mean, especially the last two years. I mean, we see how everybody's, you know, on edge and dealing with different things. It's so much nicer to be out there in the morning, saying, good morning, give them a fist bump, how's your day going? As opposed to, take off your hat, pull down your hood, get another shirt, go into the office. You know, it just, it just sets, it's such a more positive tone. And right now, we want the kids here engaged in learning and going back to kind of that cost analysis and everything, like, is it really worth it having this discussion with a kid over two-inch, you know, showing a little midriff or whatever? Just having them here in the building, wanting to be here, knowing they can express who they are and not. they are, can not impact the learning, because that's what it's all about in the end, right? So, I think now, it's just, I hate to put so much teeth into this, you know, and so many different nuances to try to manage that, I just think it sets the wrong, the wrong message. I don't see anything right now, where I'm having parents call me, kids calling, or teachers wanting to discuss that this is such a problem. I think for a lot of people, it's nice not having to enforce that after the hood. It's just, it's my takeaway, to be honest with you.
Do we, you as administrators, try to catch them pretty much as they're walking in the door, is that what you're saying?
In the old policy, we had clearly no hats, you know, that was a non-negotiable, no hoods.
Right.
Yeah, when they came in, it was trying to get them there, so that, you know, they do right there, where they weren't, then hearing it from the teacher in the next classroom, and then in the hallway. But, you know, now, it's just a totally different vibe coming in.
I, I don't know, I still feel very strongly that if you go much higher than a couple of inches on the abdomen, you're going to get into a real tricky territory with the end girls.
So, if we were to say something along the lines of, a majority of the abdomen, in the list of areas that need to be covered.
Anyways.
Because your concern was, all the way up to a halter top, but you were okay with a little bit of sort of what's fashionable and stylish, or what a kid may have outgrown over the winter.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
So that would, it does introduce a degree of subjectivity. Because we are not going to be taking a tape measure to a kid's midriff.
Right, right, and that's why I don't want to go to the inch.
But it does give us then, that room, to be able to say, this is where the line has been drawn, in these circumstances.
And I think there does need to be a line.
Well, policy 5132, according to this sheet, says, general rule regarding closing, all students should be covered from their mid-chest to mid-thigh. That, to me, covers the abdomen, so I, you know, it's already there.
That's the old, that's the old dress code.
This is the old one?
That's the old dress code.
Oh, Jesus.
Yeah, so Joy, people just ask.
But I like that language.
Yeah. But then there's no, there's no room, there's no wiggle.
No, and again, I've been in plenty of classrooms, I was a middle school principal, many moons ago, I've seen young ladies with shirts that when they're standing there, touch the top of the pants, and the minute they raise their hand,
Yes.
The shirt's halfway up the ab, I mean, you can't, it's impossible to regulate. And I'm not advocating one way or the other.
Right.
There's a certain amount of discretion involved with every policy. It's, it's the old anecdote that, for those of us who have, not necessarily pertinent to Waterford, but, the kindergartner whose older brother borrowed his backpack over the weekend for Boy Scout camp, and the kid shows up with a pocket knife in school. Districts don't expel the kindergartner because he showed up with a pocket knife.
Right.
There's a certain degree of administrator discretion in any policy for the board, so.
I think that's fine, no, I really do. I, what, what I really do think, if we could tweak that little bit, as Andre said, it would be amendable to both you guys, who have to enforce this thing, and us as board members. Look, as a former administrator, I know, maybe it was way back when, but dress code, we talked a million times in New London about going to uniforms. Because, number one, the economic disparity was, oh, you got yours from this store, and you got your clothes from this store. And, you know, the bullying that went on, just, never mind whether your abdomen's covered or not, that was an issue. Dress code has been an issue forever and ever and ever. And I don't know that there's any way to really solve it. I love the fact that you have a nice, family-oriented, congenial atmosphere in the school, I love that idea, that you're not pinning down these kids immediately. But, I do think there has to be a standard. That's all. How about you guys?
I'm not sure what you said, agreed to, but I would not.
Do you want to reread your language?
Okay. So, my idea is, Andre, Andre said something about, what was that phrase you used, Andre?
And in section F, if we add in that list of what must be covered, a majority of the abdomen.
A majority of the abdomen. Is that okay with you? No? Okay.
I don't think that.
That's okay, okay. You don't want any part of the abdomen, Michelle?
I just don't think that there is a rate, I think it's a wide range, it's left up for opinion, and when, you know, when you're in your position, whoever's in the next position that's doing this, they have their own opinion and changes. So, I don't know, it's all.
Chris?
All right.
What are your thoughts, Chris?
I, I agree with Kirk, and I agree with Tom. I think that the administrator has to have the discretion. I think there's, it's one thing, like Tom says, if it's an inch or two, there's another thing, if it's five inches, and I think that you're going to get into a situation where some are going to be a battle, and some are not going to be a battle. And if you're telling me that the phone is not ringing all the time, and that it's not become the priority, then it makes sense to me. I, I mean, the abdomen thing could go either way. I think that, that's a tough, you know, it's a tough call.
Is there a more descriptive word than majority? Great majority of the abdomen? Because, you know, our kids will say, well, a majority is 51 percent, so, I'm 51 percent covered.
I agree.
Preponderance of the abdomen. I would suggest that adjectives are usually not helpful in policy. I know, I'm just trying to get to a place where we have some consensus.
I think this is a very valuable discussion. And most of the time, when we get policies, just procedurally, we scan them, and, and to tell you the truth, I miss them. I, or, or, I know, but that's your profession, you read every, every little letter. But, but, I didn't even catch that abdomen was out, until the board meeting. So, and it's by all of us scrutinizing this a little bit harder, a little bit finer, that, you know, we came up with these issues. We're not trying to give you guys a hard time, we're just trying, it's our job to set policy, and dress code is a terrible policy to have to do. And, and I think, I think us hashing it out is very valuable, because when we go to the full board, I don't think all, the full board really looks at it with a fine-toothed comb that we have. And I think the fact that we're looking at it with a fine-toothed comb is very admirable, and will produce a policy, hopefully, that's okay for everyone.
Has anyone in our region done this yet? Changed it? And what schools?
I actually surveyed the ECC principals on their dress codes.
Yeah.
And asked if anybody had a dress code that they really liked, and that they felt resonated with their student body, and met all of the goals they had for it, could they please share it with me? Nobody had anything they wanted to share. Most said that they would love to see a dress code that actually met those criteria, and if we come up with one, please send it to them. So, this is, I mean, you are absolutely right, this is a bear of a thing for a school to deal with.
Yeah.
And there really are no schools around this area that feel that their dress code does everything they want it to, in a way that preserves that, that respectful collegial, greeting kids in the morning, not screening kids in the morning, atmosphere that Kirk was talking about.
What if you replace the word chest with torso? Michelle, would that cover your concerns?
Cover what's in there with the student's torso?
Which is your chest and your abdomen.
Tracy, did you?
My perspective is just that, majority of abdomen is reasonable and manageable to enforce. I know what majority means, and I know, I can picture in my mind, what would be unreasonable within that phrase, and what is reasonable. It allows for that little inch that's kind of stylish, and the movement of, of kids around. I think what is unmanageable is to say, no abdomen. That's what boxes us into a corner, and that's what creates very negative, embarrassing, you could use the word humiliating, discussions with young ladies, when we're saying no, because shirts fit them differently. Their bellies are all different, they're not all, you know, they're not all a size two, and so shirts fit differently, and their bellies are exposed differently. So, in my opinion, majority of abdomen, as a directive and a policy that is enforceable, that is workable, from my perspective.
Because Tracy, that goes to the point of Tom's point, and Maddie's point, if the kid bought this shirt in June, and now they've grown, and now it's September, and they haven't gotten anything, if it's gone from here to here, but it hasn't gone to here, then that makes sense. So, I get it, that makes sense. Because you're covering the financial piece.
And if I might add, I think that, like other people have expressed, that saying majority would be reasonable, because this is inherently subjective, like, we're all subjective people, we can't, no one's truly objective. And, I think, I would hope that teachers and administrators know what's socially acceptable. I mean, adults that are enforcing this know what is appropriate, and what is inappropriate. And, just allowing for majority, you know, they can say, oh, okay, so a little, like an inch is fine. But, you know, I don't think any teacher would look at the wording, and if we added, you know, majority, would think, oh, so they're saying they can wear bras to school, so.
And I think that's where your beginning-of-the-year class meetings come into play, in educating kids, and during the year reminder class meetings, that I know you all have, and student assemblies, and advisories, and those sorts of things, whatever's decided upon, that's where the education piece, and the rubber meets the road, as they say.
And I will say that, I hope we all realize that these policies are not specifically aimed at females, that they do apply to males, too. No, I think we're all in agreement there. So, although unfortunately, they affect females more than males.
So, do we have a consensus to add that one bit of language, and then to move this forward, or not? And I only am interjecting, because it is 5:00.
Okay.
And so we have to then decide, do we look at the next policies, or do we adjourn this meeting for the next subcommittee meeting? But I, I'm not trying to cut people off, I'm just being the timekeeper.
Okay, Michelle?
Can you go ahead with majority?
No. Okay, Chris?
And bring it to the board?
The majority piece is fine, but, am I correct in saying they catalogize sunglasses?
No.
No.
We don't allow sunglasses.
Oh, I see on here the red, but it's taken out, am I missing it?
I think it's because it's.
What letter are you on, Chris?
Uh, letter, first page, letter D, DE, in red.
It's up in A.
Yeah, I think it's up in A, so if you look at A, under the blue.
Oh, I see, okay, all right, I'm good.
Yep.
Thank you, it's all right.
No problem.
Could I just ask one thing? Is it appropriate to ask the teachers what they think about this, or the parents, and do a survey of parents and teachers?
Before the next board meeting?
Yes.
I don't know that that's going to get done in three days, four days, four packets go out Friday. I think that would be hard to do.
Could I just ask something? We've, this is Laura and I going through all of, all the two of our teaching teams, and we talked to them about how they absolutely can enforce the dress code, but we were emphasizing with them that we didn't want it to ever be humiliating, have an unnecessary drain on instructional time. And most of the teachers in those meetings thought the whole policy was difficult to enforce, it took away from learning, and they didn't really feel like it was fair. So, I know personally, that the majority of the teachers feel that way, there are always going to be people who don't feel that way. I just want to show you something really quick, if you'll indulge me, it'll be quick. This is the handbook from 1967, that was written by this young lady's grandfather. And in here, and so, so, Mr. Principal Goldberg was reacting to it his times, and he banned lipstick, pants for women, I mean, there's a whole slew of things.
Yep.
But.
And I was even earlier than that, so.
And I was later, and I still couldn't wear pants to school.
So let me just flash forward. So, about a year before your grandfather passed away, we came to the school, and I gave him a tour of the school. Wonderful man, we're naming our four-year after him. And at the end of the tour, we walked out to his car, and he said, Jimmy, you have a lovely school here, and I can tell kids are learning. And I'll never forget that till the day I died. He did not say, but you're violating the pants, the lipstick.
Of course not.
Of course not, because
Of course not.
We have to just understand that, these are usually a decade behind these. And I'm just starting to think of it a little bit more.
Well, we'll be the first thing in the state of Connecticut, if we pass this. So we'll be the trend center.
I don't think so, Gilford has something hurt.
All right, so I think.
So, we have a consensus to add the majority of abdomen
Yes.
To letter F, and to move that to the full policy. Would that be a correct?
Yes. Now, what about G? Some of you had some issues with G, strapless and backless attire. Because it was, we felt, some of you felt it was strictly.
I was the only one that said that.
Okay.
So I don't really care.
All right, so we're going to leave that in? Anybody else have issues with that?
It's all subjective.
I know, I know, I know.
The more things you add, the harder it is to enforce.
I know. Oh, I agree with you, Joy.
My policy would have two boards.
Wear clothes.
Dress decent, wear clothes, you know? So then, what's the committee want? Do we want to look at the other two policies, or not, in the time frame?
No. I will speak.
Oh, sorry.
Then we will, our next policy meeting will be sometime in January, after the new board sets the new subcommittees, and we will bring those up.
Yeah. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, you can.
So we need one more motion now.
Thank, I want to thank all of you for all your hard work. Students, I think you're a wonderful representation of your classes, and your student body. And administrators, I know how hard it is, I really, really appreciate all your efforts to make this a wonderful place for our students. And I understand where you're coming from, but, I do.
Thank you, Marshall.
Thanks, students, thank you, administrators.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second, is there a second out there? All those in favor?
Aye.